By call of our city council meeting to order, thank you all for being here. If we can all please rise and join together in our belligerence. Ready, begin. Roll call.
Councilmember Carter, here. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Hepburn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tendril Sallis.
Here.
And Mayor Kendrick.
Here.
It's always nice to have a full house because that means we're celebrating something good. And tonight is no exception. We have a great group of people here tonight, starting off with a very successful baseball team, my favorite sport by the way, and then some badge, well-deserved badge pinings of firefighters into their next role servicing our community. So we're going to start with the baseball team at Bonita High School. He knows the routine because I would say a few words which now I don't have to, and Ryan, the coach at Bonita High School, manager at Bonita High School, is going to tell us about the team, he's going to introduce the players, I'm going to bring them up here, introduce the other coaches, and let us celebrate together their success. So, thank you Ryan.
Ryan. Ryan, boys, we had a great year this year. First of all, thank you Mayor Kendrick, and thank you councilmembers and community members. It's really nice to see you all here. So much support, it takes a village to do what we do. And so, Mr. Ritchie is here, our principal of Bonita High School, thank you, all of you who have supported us in our endeavors. So, here is, this is Luke Watson first, he's going to be a senior next year. Ryan Cosma, catcher, going to be a junior. Mitch Mistoney, going to be a sophomore. A.J. Moreno, going to be a senior. Jake Aguirre, senior, he's in baseball pants, he has practice after this, he's ready to go. Chad Cornes going to Belmont University next year at Tennessee-Nashville, senior. Jake Gutierrez, and Sam Wolf, and Aiden Karen. We ended up Palomero's League champs for the first time. 14-1 record, and just want to say thank you to everybody. And Bill Aguirre has been a big support for us, thank you Bill. Tremendous honor, thank you Mayor Kendrick.
Want to tell us a little bit about this?
(Fire alarm) So, I've been here all year. (Laughter) (Inaudible) Senior trip is tonight, and so most of our seniors are there, and the coaching staff is also there. We have a tremendous group who are supportive, and we come out every day just excited. I come out ready to go, excited because we have a tremendous facility, and to attract and retain kids here at Bonita, it's just a great, this, this city's awesome. Laverne is one of the best cities ever. My grandma lives right down the street on 10th Street here, and so I've grown up here. And it's, it's tremendous for me, it's an honor for me to be here. Thank you guys very much, look forward to the partnership in the future. Thank you very much.
Are any of Ryan's coaches here tonight? If you are, can you please come up as well?
Here at (Inaudible).
(Laughter) (Inaudible)
They chose (Inaudible) Farm over.
Us?
Yes. (Inaudible)
And you had, and it was questionable whether you were going to be here.
No sir.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, thank Kenny for being here. I've known Kenny Ritchie the principal for years at Bonita High School. These things don't happen by accident. The young men behind me are wonderful families, they have wonderful coaches, they get to do special things because of people like Ryan, people like the principal, but also mainly because of the moms and dads. So thank you for being the best that you can be in creating the best that they can be, because by doing that, our future leaders are right here. And don't take them away from Laverne, please, because we need them. So, councilmember Hepburn is going to give out the In-N-Out gift certificates, there you are, to each one of the members, and we have, for those who weren't here. Also, I have certificates of appreciation for all the coaches, and I think anybody that's been here before understands, these are, have a Pride of Laverne citrus label on, on the right-hand side up in the corner. That is our designation for the best of Laverne, the pride of Laverne. If you happen to see when you come in, or leave, there's a citrus label, original citrus label, that's Pride of Laverne, that was on the best oranges that left Laverne, and they created the highest price anywhere in this country. So this is, this is very significant, and we feel it's very important that our coaches and others that do great things get great things. So, Coach, I'm going to give you these.
Thank you sir.
And if you can, don't take them to (Inaudible). Thank you, and thanks for the parents. We're going to do, if you can sit tight, we're going to have a recess after we do all the presentations, and then you can leave then, okay? We have a great sitting meeting coming up, and I know you all want to stay for it, but I would understand if a few of you wanted to leave, so, thank you Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks guys. And they all know how to shake your hand, I love this one. One of the groups in Laverne that I think makes Laverne is our fire department. They keep us healthy, and if you're not, they're going to make sure that you are, like take you to the hospital, get you the care that you needed. And I've asked our, our fire chief Kirk Summers to please join me up here as we go through the badge pin. I'm going to talk a little bit about each one as we go. There's a number, thank you all for being here, I'm sorry we got a call because that means there are fewer here, but it's certainly appropriate. Battalion Chief Kevin Greedley. Kevin started his career with working for the Vernon Fire Department, where that's at, and came to Laverne Fire Department as a firefighter paramedic in June of 2002. In November of 2010, he was promoted to captain. In that rank, he served as the paramedic coordinator, managed training for the emergency operations center staff, that's the EOC, that is so important to community, as well as managing the home and security grant program. He was also assigned as a medic on the Foothill Special Enforcement Team, and that's, that's our, that's, that's our team for eight years. And that means if we please get a call for something very serious, that he's the guy that goes out and makes sure that if there's any, any problems medically, that he's the guy that gets it taken care of. He is a hazmat specialist and has expertise in disaster preparedness. His current responsibilities include overseeing the community emergency response team, which is cert, I see some Jims over here, and Jeff, and Jim, and so forth, our leaders, thank you for being here tonight, as well as the EMS section. Being able to interact with families of patients who have been a significant rescue over the years gives, it gives the job a more personal relationship. So if we have people that have had serious, you know, when we're there, he follows them and makes sure that we can hear everything okay. And his, his daughter Laura will pin his badge. My practice team.
You can stop before you drop the (Inaudible).
As tradition, I would like Kevin to talk a little, introduce his family, and then talk a little bit about your career, what you're here for.
Sure. Like I said, I have my, my daughter Laura here, I also have my daughter Melanie, my son Wesley, my wife Lisa, and then my daughter Madison, she couldn't make it, she's actually in class, that's my oldest daughter. Except for me, the city of Laverne is great, it's a small town. I came from the city of Vernon, most of you probably don't know where that is, it's in downtown Los Angeles, right? Everybody always mixes up the two. I constantly get, "Oh, do you work for Vernon?" And I know, I used to, but. Huge difference in, in communities. If anybody knows that city, there is really no community, it's a city of people who work in that community, that's it. For work for the city. So, being here in Laverne, you have just a completely different feeling when you go on calls, or when you see people. My first couple of months here, I had a sore arm from waving at everybody because everybody loves a five-pointer wave. We, we only got the single finger wave most of the time when we wrapped up. It's nice to see, you know, such a great community.
Laverne knows how to use all five.
Yes.
Congratulations. Danny, Danny has lived a long way away, he was born in Pomona. He started his fire, served his career in 1997 with the Forest Service, and that, he continued with that through 2002. Then he served with the Dalton Hotshots and Engine 22. Danny graduated from Mount San Antonio College Fire Technology Program and Crafton College Paramedic Program in 1999. In 2002, he was honored as a firefighter and paramedic with the city of Laverne. He was promoted to engineer and paramedic in 2007, a fire captain in 2013. He's currently California State Fire Marshal Instructor. Danny's access to responsibility is fire department operations and training. His extensive wildland firefighting experience and training, which as a California State Fire Marshal Instructor, he is able to teach to other firefighters statewide. I know he teaches at Brackett. Brackett is an amazing place, it has all kinds of things that benefit us, through the sheriffs, through the county fire, and so forth, right here in our own backyard. And I know that Danny is an instructor there, and makes us a better place by being here. So his father Rick is going to pin the badge on.
You sure, Danny?
Sure. So my, my family with me, is my wonderful wife Shady, my best friend, my mom Deanna, father Rick, my youngest daughter Ava, my son Jacob, my aunt Kathy, my grandfather George, and my mother-in-law Michelle, and all of our friends here, oh, and my son. (Laughter) Whoops. Yeah.
You want to say anything, Dave?
I'm sure. So I'd just like to thank all of your guys' support for being here with us today, and I'd especially like to thank the members of the Laverne Firefighters Association for being here and supporting us, always being here for us. And I'd also like to thank (Inaudible). (Laughter) Fire Chief Kirk Summers. Outstanding man, lead us in a great direction, we're happy to have him aboard. So, once again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for supporting us, hope to see you out there.
We're going to have another badge pinning for a captain, our captain Corey Thompson, he was not available to be here this evening, so we will go on to another captain, and he's almost homegrown, that's Kevin Wilton. Kevin started with the Laverne Fire Department 27 years ago as a fire explorer, and has worked for the department full-time for 20 years. He'll conduct, he helps conduct our K-5 Fire Safety Education Program for Laverne Elementary Schools. And this is a blow-up kind of a house, it is a simulation, and firefighters can go in there and do different things to teach the kids what to do in different situations. He oversees the department protective equipment, and I want to get back a little bit to the, to the elementary school, because I have seen this man, his kids went to, are they still going to Grace Miller?
Oh, I wish. (Laughter) Anyway, I've seen his involvement off-time with that school, with the elementary school kids, and if there's any hope that I have for you Kevin, it's that you stay connected with those kids, because they adore you, they listen to you, and all the parents get to learn from their kids, who come home and tell them what to do because you've explained it. So, Kevin's been a great guy in Laverne, lives in Laverne, and his daughters Samantha and Amanda are going to pin his badge.
What's here to do the instruction? No, they're not in elementary school anymore. (Laughter)
Well, my name's Kevin Wilton, I'm born and raised here, I went through all the elementary schools, Grace Miller, Ramona, graduated from Bonita. Congratulations guys, awesome. Thanks to my guys in the fire department, and my crew for going and supporting you guys during the league, it was awesome being able to go out there and watch you guys play, you guys totally deserve it. Thank you for my wife, she's been an inspiration for me, and making me push myself, go harder and harder, thank you. I got my wife Rosie, my daughters that you met, Amanda, Samantha, my sister Carrie, my mom Sandy, and my niece Ashley here, and all my brothers from the fire department, I appreciate it, thank you guys very much.
Okay, next we have fire engineer Travis Moore. A career change led Travis to the fire service in 2004. He worked as an EMT with Coast Shafer Ambulance of Pomona, and started as an apprentice firefighter with Laverne in 2006, after he completed the Mount SAC Fire Academy. He graduated from paramedic school in 2008, and was hired full-time as a paramedic firefighter. Engineer Moore is a CPR skilled instructor, works on the fire apparatus committee, and assists with fire safety education programs for the Bonita Unified School District, which is great, it's always good to help kids. Going on wildfire assignments as a line paramedic and type 3 strike team, supporting cities across California during some of our worst fires. So here we have a trained paramedic firefighter, and what does he do? He goes out and helps people, and I know that firsthand, because it's something that just recently happened in my family, so thank you very much. And his badge is going to be pinned by his mother Rebecca. Don't be nervous.
I just want to thank my family for being here, my beautiful daughter crying in the (Inaudible), Ruby and Gemma, my beautiful wife who's always supported me, my other daughter Grace, and my son Russell, my parents are here, my mom Rebecca, my dad Russ, and my other family is here too, my other sister Samantha and Kendall, I'm just kidding, Rachel and Kendall. Thanks for coming. This is kind of a special badge pinning for me, because not all my family could come the first time, because they were, my sister was pretty sick in the hospital, so. Isn't that, I don't know, you know, (Inaudible). And thank you, I wanted to thank the guys that showed up from the LVFA and the fire department, thank you, you guys are really important.
Those are the firefighters that are within our city that have been promoted, the next three are new hires, so we're going to start off with firefighter and paramedic Eric Marana. Ryan? Andy, you want to come on up? Eric was an apprentice firefighter with the Laverne Fire Department since March of 2016, and was the recipient of the Laverne Firefighter Association Apprentice of the Year Award in 2018. After completing a two-week semi-academy, he worked on his first shift on March 9th at Station 1. He will continue to train and complete probationary testing over the next 12 months, and his badge will be pinned on by his wife Carla. This has never happened. This is good stuff.
How old is the baby?
That is precious. Now you get to talk.
That wasn't on purpose, by the way.
If it was, it shouldn't be.
It's her beating time, so. That's Hila Rose, she's my first baby, our first baby together. That's my small family, my wife Carla. Thank you to everybody, all my mentors, my captains, I appreciate everything.
As tradition, when a firefighter starts in Laverne, the president of the association gives a gift to that, and Andy, if you want to.
Yeah, so we, we give like a nice pin set so that he can replace these (Inaudible). All professional and matches badge, so, well, I'm sorry. (Laughter) So congratulations for being hired. One's a pencil, one's a pencil.
Firefighter and paramedic Corey Bancroft. Corey has been an apprentice firefighter with Laverne since March of 2016, and May of 2018, graduated from Paramedic Training Institute and became a licensed paramedic. His first shift was on May 30th, not very long ago. Over the course of the next 12 months, he will continue to train and work through the probationary testing, his badge will be pinned on by his mother Mariann, Mariann, and his father Kirk, so if you can please. Before they leave, somebody told me, a little birdie told me today, about something that their, that Corey's parents have just done, and I would like to have you to explain to our audience which has took place in your life.
We just got off a plane at 5:30 this afternoon, and I was thinking, "We're not going to get here." But we've been traveling cross-country. There's an annual run for the, run for the wall, that is a POW MIA accountability ride, calling for the accountability of our 1,586 left MIAs not accounted for, and this is the 31st year of this run. So since May 15th, I haven't gone, but I was able to come back and see this, and then I fly back to Colorado. My daughter came in from Colorado with this and surprised me.
So, did Mariann, did you also?
I flew out there last Friday and rode back to Colorado.
So you've done this a number of times, that you've, there's a lot of thousands of bikes that congregate, and then head for the wall, and then they celebrate this at the Vietnam War. Thank you very much.
So my name's Corey Bancroft, similar to my captain, Captain Wilton, I'm kind of homegrown, I've lived here 26 years, just moved out about a year ago, went up for the school systems as well. Glad to be here, it's my city, so, thank you, thank the department, everybody there, excited to continue this.
Congratulations. Okay, our last new paramedic firefighter is Tanner Walker. Tanner was an apprentice firefighter with Laverne since June of 2017, graduated from Paramedic Training Institute in February of this year, and his badge will be pinned on by his mother Pamela. You've been nice to your mother.
All right, so just continue the trend, I'm thankful, thank you for everyone that came out, thank you to my family, my parents, my grandparents, my girlfriend and my brother, we're all able to make it here, as long as, as well as my girlfriend's parents. Thank you to the department, my crew, you know, for giving me a good foundation, and then for the association, and everybody else being so welcoming to the department, so. And thank you chief, for giving me that call.
Do you have any names, whether you're a fan?
That's one of my engineers back there, so this is Adam, my mom's boyfriend Adam, my mom Pamela, my grandma and grandfather Mickey and Tom, my brother Hunter, and my girlfriend Madison, as well as Dee and Tim, girlfriend's parents, so, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I've asked our fire chief Kirk Summers to kind of summarize that, talk a little bit about what we're doing, what we're seeing.
First of all, I couldn't be prouder of these firefighters, we've got a great group here, and you had the opportunity tonight to meet our future leaders. And they're a great group, I have great confidence in them, and they're going to do great things for us. One thing I want to say though, a special thank you to all of you. One thing I want to say though, a special thank you to all of you, family members. Because we come here, we get the reward of going on incidents and helping people. It's a great job. It's not a job, it's a great career. And we get that reward every day. We get to come see our mates when we come to the firehouse. But at home, the wives and girlfriends and the parents keep the machine going, okay? The support that they offer us through those tough times, when we've just been beat by calls and seen horrible things, the support we get from our families is invaluable. So from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate all of you and thank all of you on behalf of all of our firefighters.
Okay, thank you to everybody here. Thank you for the baseball team, the coaches, the parents. Thank you to our firefighters and their families for making this the best town that we possibly can. We're going to take a short break. So those that don't want to stay for our exciting meeting, but leave, probably be mostly, but thank you for coming. We'll go back on the agenda. Consent calendar, item five, we are pulling resolution number 1934. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve other than 1934?
Second.
Okay, resolution number 1934. Tim, you asked this to be read?
Yes. I wrote a little something about it. I'm concerned about resolution 1934, annual city agreements. I've had many discussions with staff on competitive bidding for outside contractors. I realize that to do these request for proposals, which is RFPs, is additional work for staff. However, we owe this to our residents to be stewards of our money. We've had many of these vendors for years without competitive bid process. My point is that we are in a $200,000 deficit and as a council, we have always worked with our city management and staff to look at every avenue to save costs and not cut services. So if we went out for RFPs, request for proposals on all of our services and the event that we could save even 2%, it would help us with our financial problem. And that is why I'm not supporting the resolution. I believe we need to go out to competitive bids. We may even get better services than we currently get. I'm only trying to find ways to save our residents and city money. Thank you.
Any comments?
Well, Tim, on that, I have in the past felt that way too. The reason, only reason now I'm not, I looked into it this year for the ones that we have on here, is because if, we have been with a lot of these organizations for companies for quite some time now. And so we're set at a certain rate. You go out to bid, those people bidding are going to bid the job too. And then so you don't have that base, what we're paying now to be, come back in there if you decide, oh, all these bids are higher than this one. And I think viscerally sound is to stay where we are with these right now. So I just feel that's where I stand on that.
Before we, let's see if there's anybody. Is there anybody who would like, from the audience, that would like to make a comment on resolution number 1934? It's been pulled, so it's open for discussion. If anybody would like to discuss this side of...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would. Rick Fellen. I read this also, and I read the background and in the packet. And it indicates that a lot of times, as councilperson Carter just said, a lot of times you may get higher bidder. How do you know unless you go out to bid? You keep a contract for 20, in one case with our esteemed attorney, 29 years. And you never put it out to bid. I was at the meeting last time and it appears that the council will not put out the waste management bid. Again, time after time. There's 22 contracts listed in the packet. One of them, I went back and I looked at last year's, and a company that was identified on the background, not by name, but by traffic signal maintenance, they raised their hourly rate, their labor rate, 20 to 30% last year. And they want to increase it another 7% this year. But no bid. And it said basically, it's too much trouble to put it out to bid. And God knows, somebody might come in higher. In that case, why have a bid process at all? Out of 22 agreements on this sheet, there's only one that's new. So I guess my question would be, what happened to that old vendor? Why, was that a bid? Did they go out of business? What happened? Because it's the only one out of 22. It makes no sense. And also, when it says no change in the contract, I've learned over time to try to anticipate city speak. Does that mean that if there was graduated increases, that they automatically take place? So there may not be a change in the past agreement, but the past agreement may have automatic raises involved. That's the purpose of a contract, I believe. And that's why periodically at least, you put things out to bid. This sheet looks almost exactly like last year. So in a year, you can anticipate putting 10, 15, 20% of your contracts out to bid? It makes no sense. And it is our money. I understand it's probably a long process. But it seemed to me that that would be part of the process of having your job in the city and doing, putting things out for bid, anticipating bids coming up. And again, put it on a schedule, 10%, 15, 20% per year. That's manageable versus 22. But to just continue to roll them over and not try to save the citizens' money, that just doesn't make any sense to me. So, Mr. Hepburn, I appreciate you trying to look out for our money. I just wish, I just wish it would happen and not just continuously roll these over based on longevity. Because the longer you keep them, the longer the longevity argument actually makes sense. So please, I know what you're going to do here, but in the future, I would hope you start the bidding process. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this issue?
Steve Johnson, 2571 Third Street, Laverne, California. Guys, I think you have a fiduciary, a fiduciary, you have a responsibility to the residents. Fiduciary. And at some point, you do have to go out to bid. You can't just keep rolling it over. Yes, it could go up, but there are so many competitors in this market, the chances of that are probably slim to none. There are competitors in this market. Waste management is not the only one out there. In fact, I believe waste management takes the city of Laverne's refuge to one of their competitors to process. Their competitors may give money on that deal. And they could probably be doing it for less. It makes sense. And you do have a responsibility to the residents to get the best deal.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to add one comment. Any agreement that you do place, I would hope would have a no donation, no gift clause. For the last two years, 2017 and 18, waste management has given money in the form of tickets and/or donations and/or dinners to two city employees and one city council person. So on top of not wanting to roll the thing over, there, it's not a lot of money. But my question is why? Why would you take $100, $200 from a vendor and then fight so hard to roll over their contract? So I would hope that any contract in the future says no donations, no gifts, no money to anyone involved.
Anybody else like to address this issue?
My name is Rich Gill, 4911 Coral Way. And as I stated in previous meetings, I worked with federal contracts as a military member for five years. And we never, ever stayed with the same contractor. We always put our contracts out for bids and we always put in writing what we wanted. And we never had a high bid. We always had bids that were low and bids that were reasonable. And we never had anything that we thought was outstanding or that made such a significant change that we had to make a change to our contracts. We monitored them and we made sure that everything that we had in those contracts was followed to the word. I just want to make sure that we don't stay and continue rolling with the same things over and over again just because it's past practice. The federal government doesn't do that. I don't see why the city should do that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I know that majority of these contracts do fall under public works. And I think Dan Keasy might be able to shed some light on how they're evaluated and not just rolled over as this kind of being suggested.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Johnson is right. We have a duty to make sure that we are getting the best cost, the best price on everything we do relative to our contracts, to our maintenance activities, to the general functions of all of our jobs. And frankly, I'm a bit disturbed to think that anybody in this community would believe that we don't have that interest at heart. Okay? These contracts don't just roll over year after year. We look at them every single year. We go over the pricing changes with them every single year. We talk to our colleagues in other communities to see what they're paying these types of contractors, if not the same contractor. We are in line or lower than most people in this surrounding area in everything we do just about. And low bid and low price is not just the primary concern you have to be paying attention to. With our engineering contracts, for example, the ability to understand this community, to be good at what they do and be able to trust in the responses they give us, says much, much more than the low bid. So we have to, we have to put a lot of trust into those type of contractors. Our engineering contractor for our water system, for example, civil tech engineering, one of the principals in that firm has been with two different firms over his career, but been with this city for over 30 years. He's built this water system. He knows this water system. Are they fairly pricey? Yes. But all utility contractors, particularly, you know, engineering are pricey. But he knows this engineering. He knows this water system. So what takes him an hour might take the next guy five hours to do. And it won't be the same quality. I trust my people. I trust my contractors. They're not my friends, they're not my associates. I'm not trying to pat anybody's pocket, nor are they patting mine. We're trying to bring the best people we can here to this community based on the best price we can get. And that's always been our practice for my entire 33-year career here. So I hope that sheds some light on how we view and manage these contracts. You know, and putting them out to bid is not just calling somebody and saying, I need three quotes for a new refrigerator. It's a lot of effort to put an apples-to-apples comparison into a RFP. And for us to do that every single year, we can do that if that's what you want. Tell me what you don't want me to do so I can make the time to do this. We can do that. But it takes a lot of effort. It's not that simple of a process. I'm sorry, the tone of my voice is not what I should be, but I've given my heart and soul to this community for 33 years. And I'm bothered by it. I'm sorry.
No, you explained it quite well, didn't you?
Thank you.
Two other things I'd like to add to that. In your, in the staff report, it also includes, part of this process, the finance department does evaluate the contracts based on what the expense of any type of change is going to be. And he works with the department to evaluate if there, there's a cost benefit analysis and putting it out to RFP. As you can see by the list, the requested increases are minimal in the ones where there are increases. Some have been decreases. And to clarify, where it says no change, that absolutely means there's going to be no change in the expense to the city for the services that were provided in the private here. The last thing I'll add is, the city is currently engaged with the council of governments on looking at how we might be able to get an economy of scale on certain services. So we're in evaluation with seven or eight other cities on where we have common services that we feel we may be able to package together. That study has not been completed by the cog yet, but if it does result in some savings, we will certainly bring those back for consideration to the council in doing a joint audit.
And on that list that you are referring to, there's 22 categories and two decreased and only four increased, and the rest data no charge, change. So that's out of 22 of them.
The, I want to thank Mr. Keasy for his remarks. That's not surprising, nor is it unknown to me, that there are many ways you can manage a portfolio of service agreements such as these. One is on an annual basis, go out with a competitive solicitation for each and every one of them, or a portion thereof. And that costs money to do. There's another way to do it, which is to understand what your neighbors are surveying your communities around you are getting and understand where you are relative to all of that. All of that must be taken into consideration, not just to the price that you're going to spend, but the value that you are indeed getting from those services. And indeed, this grand little city of ours is over 100 years old. So it's not like a brand new city off the streets where you can jump in and understand what our pipes and sewers are doing, or the way the roads are working or whatnot. So it is a bit more sophisticated than simply going out with a competitive solicitation. It does seem like there are a lot of them, but there are 22 different categories, let alone 22 different contracts. So it's not as if I'm, the 22nd contractor can bid for 1 through 21 in addition to their own. So I do believe and I have faith in our leadership and our staff that they're managing this portfolio frugally. So I'm in favor of supporting this.
There's several companies here that I know personally from 25 years ago, traffic signal maintenance. One of the reasons that we keep these people is because if we have a light that's out, a traffic signal, it's a safety hazard. Do we have somebody come out that we know will be there in two hours or an hour and a half? Traffic signal maintenance does that. Now, in order to provide that service, they charge a fee, but it's not an endless fee. And I noticed that there was an increase of 7% for an hourly wage fee. I don't think that's exorbitant considering the service that they provide to us because it's a safety matter. As far as our waste holler, waste management, one of the things that perhaps you don't know are the services they don't charge us for, that they provide in the hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. Now, if I could save you several hundred thousand dollars a year, I want to do that. Does that mean we don't go out to bid? Well, we use active services to clean streets. We don't use waste management. They work the low contract. So it's not a matter of one company having a lock on all the services. It's a matter of us finding the best person to do the job for us at the best price and providing us with... providing us with extra service that doesn't cost anything.
Dan, the intention was that I value your talents in this city, and you do a fantastic job. I've always talked to you about these bids and contracted contracts. I am in a competitive bid environment. I have been my whole life. I know how the contracts work. I know how the competitive bid works. I think my, my issue is that if you don't go out, you don't know what you're going to receive. You don't know what service you're going to get. I agree that we have services here that are extremely important to our community, but if you never go out and find out what the competition is and what they have, you're never going to know that pricing. And, and right now, at this point right here, at just roughly, Nathan had sent me the numbers. It's one point seven, one point seven million dollars and some change with not all of these twenty-two companies that, that have been reported yet. Thank you, Nathan, for that. I appreciate it. But even a small savings would be a savings to the city. And I believe in competitive, and I believe in comparable services and quality services. So don't misunderstand saying competitive bid is cheap prices. I'm not a cheap contractor. My prices are sometimes higher, but they choose me because I can get the job done. And that's the most important thing that we have to think about. But I'm always saying, I've always told you this before, we've had this discussion, that one or two percent off of the top. Of the ones that are the largest, largest people we have here, being RKA, being Wallen and Crest, being some of the consulting firms, Lever Cassidy, just some of the large ones, even a small percentage. And I understand. It's just bringing it up to say, we need to be more transparent with our community. We need to be more transparent with the money we spend as, as civic leaders and as residents. That's all. And you do a fantastic job, and I know that this is not an easy thing to do, even if we took a piece of these and did a few at a time, or even did three-year contracts so we don't have to look at this again for three years and have clauses in there. I'm just throwing it out there. I just think it is something we should do.
This, this is a very frugally managed city and has been for years and years. When we go out every year and do comparisons with other cities, we in essence are going out to bid. We're finding out what other people are paying because we know that those bidders will be bidding that price in our city. I'm also thinking that the residents of Laverne are willing to pay for what's right, for the best possible service that they can get. Does that mean it's always the cheapest? Or is it, or is it the best? And I think we want inexpensive, but we want something of superior quality. We're talking about waste management. Waste management, and it's going to come up here one of these days for approval, but waste management is the third lowest of fifteen local haulers. And, and the people that get, the bids that people want us to look at, they're, they're charging other cities more. And so, we are right at the bottom. There's two cities below us, but they're right there with us, and it goes up from there. So, we look at these things very carefully, and our residents are served by a very frugal community, by frugal leadership, by frugal staff. Dan is always looking for what's best for this community. Bob Russey is always looking for what's best for the community. It doesn't mean that it's always the low bid, but it's the best bid, and it's the best bid for our residents. When we went out for a bond, we got a double A minus rating. No cities get that. And when Standards and Poor interviewed the city and gave us that rating, they gave it to us because of a long history of being frugal and, and making the right decisions. This is the right decision. So, thank you. Could we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
I second.
Vote, please. Thank you. We'll move on to item six, public comment appropriations limit. Public hearing, I'm sorry. Public comment is coming. Public hearing appropriations limit, two thousand nineteen and twelve.
Each year, the city is obligated through state law to establish an appropriation limit. This is a calculation that is done based on a couple of factors. One of them is the percent population change, and there, there are quite a few moving variables here, so I'm not going to try to go into all of them. The other one, in this case, we use the non-residential construction changes for the county for this year. The appropriation limit was calculated at one hundred and seventy-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. So as you can see, this is a relatively large number in relation to the city's finances. Our total revenues that are applicable to this cap are roughly nineteen million dollars, so we are far below this threshold. However, we are obligated to adopt such, such a threshold based on the prescribed calculation. That is the calculation that you have before you, and staff does recommend approving appropriation. Are there any questions on that for me?
This is probably a question that you don't have an answer to, but is any city in California at or near their own appropriations limit that you know of?
I have seen quite a few.
Really?
And I have not seen one that even comes close.
Oh, you've seen quite a few cities?
I've seen quite a few cities.
Okay.
I have not seen any that comes. The theoretical idea was that you didn't want excess tax funds funneling into a city. It's just the calculation doesn't make sense for most cities.
Thank you. State law is something we don't even get close to.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We'll open this as a public hearing, so at this time, anybody would like to address item six, please do so at the podium. We will close, close the public hearing, and if there's no other comments, we'll proceed with motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Item seven, other matters, resolution nineteen thirty-one agreement for temporary employment of Fire Chief Kirk Summers.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you're aware, the city's fire chief has been on medical leave since late November two thousand eighteen. Currently, it is unknown when his status will change. In order to close the gap in the fire department's administrative obligations, the city entered into an employment agreement with Chief Kirk Summers this past February. That was done under Government Code Section two-one-two-two-four. And at this time, it is still unknown how long Chief Jankowski will remain on leave, and the city is concerned that Chief Summers' original agreement will expire, which expires at the end of this month, before we know what Chief Jankowski's status will be. Staff and Chief Summers are supportive of continuing on under the previously set terms and conditions in that employment agreement, so nothing's changing in that. It just basically extends it for up to another year. With the nine-hundred-and-sixty-hour limitation that has been set forward, with similar agreements for employees that are retired and new interns, basically. After discussing the situation with CalPERS staff, they have instructed the city to enter into this new agreement under a separate section under the same government code. It's just, just a different part of that is two-one-two-two-one G. Pursuant to this section, the council may appoint a CalPERS retiree to full position which is available because of a leave of absence granted to a person on payroll status for a period not to exceed one year, and then again the nine-sixty requirement. Chief Summers has over forty years of experience in the fire service, including being the fire chief for the Chino Valley Independent Fire District. After his retirement, he has since served as an interim chief for Laguna Beach and San Gabriel Fire Departments, making it specifically fitting the need that we need with the vacancy in our, in our fire chief. Staff recommends the city council approve the tax resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Kirk Summers to provide temporary part-time employment, and the resolutions attached. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, huh?
I just have one question for clarification. The nine-hundred-and-sixty hours is a limit based on him?
Correct, him specifically, and it's part of...
Him specifically, and it's each fiscal year? So it's up to June thirtieth is one nine-hundred-and-sixty, and then June, July first, and after would be a second nine-sixty, is that correct?
That's typically how it works. Frankly, we, the ones that we've done previously have been for like a six-month time span where somebody's retired from us, and then because of their specialized skills, we've extended them on for nine-hundred-and-sixty hours, basically only six months.
Whether that crossed over a fiscal year or not?
Yeah, and we haven't ever crossed that threshold. We've only done them for six months. So this is a unique situation where it's unknown how, how long it is, and we initially only did it for six months, hoping that we would have more clarity on that status. But since we don't, and Chief Summers is willing to stay on, that's the best thing for the department at this point, so that's why we're looking to do it.
The nine-sixty limitation, though, that would expire on July thirtieth, though, starts a new clock.
This is resetting it.
That's what, that's what I was trying to get to. We're not going to, we're not going to run into the nine-sixty limitation, but we, because we've already been having him work.
Correct, especially since this is under a different section of the code, it does reset it.
So that would reset the clock, too?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
That was, that was my question, because you have two versions here. You have nine-sixty cap on CalPERS, and it's like, okay, you've got this one here, and then you start a new one again. So that, that was going to be...
And that was a specific conversation we, we have with CalPERS because we said, this is going to be extending something that we weren't originally thinking we would need to extend.
It can get dicey if you don't do it correctly.
Correct. Luckily, we have a good contact at hers that's very helpful.
Yeah, it's very helpful. Should I personally face him?
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this? Okay, bring it back. Any comments?
He has done a wonderful job. I'd love to see him stay with us, and I wish he could come out of retirement. But, you know, so, I'm in support of this.
Good. We're here.
And the continuity is important.
I think that with what happened, I think he's pulled things together quite nicely, and the fire department is being put together as it should be as a whole with Mr. Summers, and I look forward to his time here.
You heard tonight, for those that were here, why it's important for you to stay here. And addressing the parents of the firefighters, the families of so forth, it's, I hold hardly doubt, and I would like to make the motion in this room. Second?
Second.
Thank you. You shouldn't get a better pen, though. One that comes with a pencil. Where's Andy? See, there he is. You got your job, Andy. Okay, item B, under seven. A council member at Laverne has requested the topic of the Los Angeles County feasibility study for providing fire services be brought back before the city council for consideration. Just want to clarify that when a vote has been taken, the major, anybody that has, that's on the majority of the vote can bring it back, and he voted not to do the study, and so that was the majority, and he has the privilege of bringing it back, which he is doing tonight, so, councilor.
I want to be very clear on the subject. When council member Davis brought this up, I originally voted against the feasibility study for county fire services. It was due to my concerns of the additional lawsuits with the firefighters in the city. I was very concerned that this might add to the fuel of the fire, and it would be an issue. Since the lawsuit's been resolved, I feel that, in line with transparency, that this is, free study should be done so that residents are informed of the cost of both private and outside services.
That motion?
That's a motion.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this? Okay, bring it back. And Rob?
I cannot change my mind. The residents have spoken to me, have spoken to all of us, and I'm standing firm for the residents, and, so I cannot support this.
Charlie?
At the time, since we just had the first vote, we had put some legal issues behind us and trying to move forward, and I think that was the most important part of, of the reason that I voted for the county study. It seemed to me at the time that the fire department in total wanted to be county firemen. So I thought, let's give them the opportunity to look at that, if that's, if that's what they want to do. Since that time has passed, we've put this in our, in the rearview mirror. I think after tonight's badge pinning, it's important for us to, more than ever now, put this in the rearview mirror. So for that reason, I can't support a county study at this time, at this time.
I guess I'm, I'm still open to a study. I'm, I guess I'm still a little puzzled. When I came out and proposed it in February, nearly four months ago, I had talked about the fact that I wanted to provide an avenue going forward where the community could come together with understanding. You had mentioned the concern for the risks at that time, and I appreciated the fact that we were just beginning the lawsuits, but now that they're behind us, I guess I'm, I didn't understand the risks that would prevent us from moving forward with a county study. So I'm more interested in hearing the risks that you were concerned about to enlighten me to understand why now is the appropriate time, whereas in February it wasn't. So if you could elaborate on the additional lawsuit risks that you were concerned about and help me understand what your concerns were back then, that would help me understand and join you in this.
As I stated, I just felt at the time, and it was my, it was my intention, and I, when I discussed on the dais, I know we had much discussion on that, and that our residents are very happy with the fire service, very happy, there's no question about it. But being in a free, free survey, and the fact that my biggest concern was legal issue, if there was going to be an issue between the city and the firefighters, if we did this, this would fuel the fire, to say, and be an issue on either side, and that was my biggest concern. And since that, like I say, since that...
So how would that have been a risk for the city?
Again, more legal issues. It could have been an issue that would be brought up, that, that looking for outside fire services, that they could have used it, either, either side could have used it. I'm, I'm just, that was my concern. That concern is no longer, and that's the reason I'm bringing it back. And I feel that it's, it's transparency, if the residents, it's a free study, the residents want to see it, they'll do the study, look for comparable services.
If the residents want to do it, so if they, I haven't had any, I mean, when I brought this up last time, the residents I spoke with were not in favor of going forward, but I was of the mind to say, more information is better, and so I was able to gain some support. Do you have any resident support, or do you have, I mean, I'm trying to understand whether this is a logical decision?
I've discussed this with Bob Russey.
Sounds a little political to me right now.
It's not political. I've discussed it with Bob Russey. I've also discussed it with Kirk Summers regarding the issue of the feasibility. I don't have a problem with the free study. The residents are going to be the ultimate decision on fire services. We keep our own fire services, that's great. That's what the residents want. But at least give them an avenue. It's just like a competitive bid situation where you go out and say, here's what it costs here, here's what it costs here, this is your service, it's free, doesn't cost us a cent.
How is that going to bring a risk to the lawsuit? I'm still having trouble with your head and...
Considering the lawsuit's over.
Right, but at the time...
I was concerned. That's all I stated myself. What more do you want?
I'm trying to understand your concern. You talked about transparency. I'm trying to understand your concern.
My concern, I told you, my concern was the fact that there would be an issue between the firefighters or the city, that there might be an issue with a feasibility study right in the middle of a lawsuit, when we have the firefighters suing the city, or situations going on with their fire chief. I didn't want it to become any more than what it already was, and that's my concern.
And that concern has gone away?
Yes. It's over.
Is it?
Yes, it is.
That concern is over, you're saying?
My concern's over, you're saying? The firefighter lawsuit is over.
Well, the lawsuit's over, yes, but the concern is what I'm talking about.
That's over.
I'm having trouble understanding your logic, but I'm, I'm, I'll listen to others. I'm having trouble understanding your logic. But I'm, I'm listening to others.
I'd like to, it's something we haven't discussed as a reason for this, is keep in mind while we are pursuing the tax measure, it's natural for one of the questions to come up, have we considered everything? And if nothing else, having the information at some point may be helpful. And so I just want to make, as I look at how we pursue that to be successful, that is something that I want to point out.
Doing the survey?
Doing, yes, doing it. To at least have the information.
I appreciate that. I have not talked to one individual in the city and I probably know more people in the city than anybody that's, that's here tonight, that is even contemplating doing anything but having their own fire service.
Sorry, I'm having trouble.
And also, they said if it's gonna cost more money, we'll pay it. That's not a question that I have asked. And I look at all the firefighters tonight, Kevin and Danny and Manano and so forth. These are the people that our residents want to be in the city as firefighters. This is not an issue of getting more information. This is a decision, in my opinion, of quality of life. This is a decision that this city has had for years and don't want to change it. I am not in favor of the study because the residents aren't in favor of the study. They will pay what the fire, what the needed amount for the firefighters, the reasonable amount that we've always done and that's what we're going for, is that I firmly believe that this tax measure should be done. Because if we don't go after that sales tax, the county's gonna go after and our money's gonna go someplace else and not here. And I would rather stay right here in the city of Laverne and take care of our people, take care of our situations and not in favor of getting any information on the county. I've said that before and I will say in the beginning. So, is there a motion?
I think councilmember Hepburn made a motion. You didn't ask for a second. I don't know whether they're, at this point.
Is there a second for his motion?
I think for the benefit of the tax measure, I'll second the measure.
Vote please. Thank you. Okay, we will move to public comment. And this is for any item that is not on the agenda. Just a minute.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Rick Bowen. I'd just like to say to Mr. Keasy, you seem to take it personal about the bid. Me personally, if I thought there was anything untoward going on, I would say so. I didn't, never said that.
Okay, that's, that was on the agenda? You got another comment?
Well, okay. Okay, I'm, okay. Well, there's another agenda item that I guess I'll violate. Chief Summers, thank you. You seem to be a great guy. Your guys seem to like you. And what a difference one person can make in a city. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address their public comment? Yes.
Anna Anderson. We've been talking about the possible sales tax increase and I know Claremont's been talking about it also. So I was a little concerned about how it's kind of been sold to us. So I called the California Tax and Fee Department in Sacramento and first I talked to a customer service person and she gave me some answers to my questions and then I didn't make sense, so I called back and this other girl started saying different things. And I said, wait a minute, somebody else told me something else. So they, they transferred me to the audit department. So I talked to an auditor. So, this is hypothetical, how it would happen. And I don't know, you might, you may know this, but I think that it has to be put out there. So I'm just gonna read what he told me. He said, if the county voted in, in a 10.25 sales tax, then they would have a list of cities that have already raised their sales tax and exclude them with a waiver at their discretion. So in other words, if we raised ours to 10.25 and then the city or the state raised theirs and it came up at 10.25, they would have to give us a waiver. Okay? If they didn't give us a waiver, then the cities would have to go to the legislation and get a waiver from them. And if they didn't give us a waiver, then if a waiver was not granted, the combination tax would be 11% in order for us to continue to receive our additional 0.75%. So our sales tax would go up to 11%. Now for that not to happen, he said that Laverne would have to put in our sales tax bill that we are voting on, that if LA County or the, or the state raises sales tax, then the 75% additional tax we voted on would go away in order to avoid the increase to 11%. So that would have to be in the bill. Is that right?
I don't know.
Okay. When you call, they recommend that you don't take any verbal information from them, that you get it in writing. So I suggest that somebody, is that your job or somebody's job, would actually contact them and get this in writing. Because if we don't do it this way and they raise the sales tax, our sales tax can go up to 11, this is hypothetical on the numbers, but our sales tax would go up in the city. Okay? So that's what the auditor told me. So I would definitely get that in writing from him and check on this. Because it's not being, it's not being sold that way. It's like, oh, if we get the 0.75%, you know, and somebody else goes, they go to 10.75%, then we would still keep that. Well, there has to be waivers to do that. Or, or we have to put it in our bill that if, if anything else went up, then it would be taken away. Okay?
Thank you, Anna. Virginia Belltrane.
And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm sorry, just the wonderful festivities that started here early before I got here. Anyhow, there was an issue that happened with one of my family members and it was very unfavorable as far as the outcome against my family members being quite unethical and warranted on behalf of some of the law enforcement officers of the city. Ever since, I have put a complaint, numerous complaints against that very poor activity on that day. A lot of reprisal has come, befallen on the family at that household. They are being singled out and ticketed for every and any infraction. That is uncalled for. I'm in zero tolerance to that type of behavior. Unfortunately, we do have a family lawyer now who is gonna seek further action. But I would like to let you aware, because I am a respectful person and community member for 56 years now, to please reiterate what the law officer's roles are as far as what they're paid to do. That we pay them on a, on a monthly basis and yearly and annually at that, at that rate. And if they cannot uphold the law that they say that they will uphold, then I would like to ask for their removal. And that is why I'm coming here to bring it to your attention. I'm not trying to be so ugly in my form here and, and comment. But I, I've been a long-going family member of many uncalled-for incidents against my own personal family, my own personal self. And that's why I'm saying I have zero tolerance now and unfortunately now we have a family member, I mean, a family lawyer who's gonna take action on this. I just wanted to present it to you. I'm sure you are the person in charge that can combat such awful behavior and rectify any future issues as far as going outside of their job duties and causing injuries to, to law-abiding and tax-paying individuals in this community. Thank you for your, for your time.
Roy Halbert.
Good evening. Roy Halbert, 2828 North White Avenue. I represent the Laverne Bicycle Coalition and our role is advocating for safety for all road users, not just bicycles. And recently, we hosted a pit stop on Bike to Work Day and it poured rain all day long. We had four people show up. One was a runner and two of them were members of our coalition team. And I just want to stand here and thank Bob Russey for his vision, creativity and foresight. He challenged the city employees to their own special Bike to Work Day last Wednesday. And so we showed up with our, our team with bagels and some water, some cream cheese, as well as some swag from Metro who hosted the Bike to Work Day. And I tried to challenge the mayor to ride his bike, but that's not gonna happen. I know that. But Bob rode all the way from Upland, picked up two ladies on the way. They're all riding their bikes. It's all good. Sorry, Bob. Out at you right here.
It's called the Peloton.
Yeah, part of the Peloton, that's right. One of the city employees rode all the way from Diamond Bar, which she does several days a week. In fact, she was one of the, one of the ones that rode in pouring rain two weeks before that. Another of our city employees brought his elementary school daughter on her bike and dropped her at Grace Miller on his way to City Hall. And so by my count, 10 of the people that are employed in this building rode their bikes that day. And I think that's about a third of the occupants, right, Bob? Something like that. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Bob, thank you to the city. We took 10 cars off of our already congested streets and removed 10 cars out of the congested parking lot, making space for others. So, thank you. Thanks, Bob. Thanks to the employees. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy. I must give credit where credit is due. Candice Wocott was the one who really pushed that as well. But thank you.
I thought you were gonna clarify your pickup.
Yeah, well.
Smoothie. Anybody else would like to make?
I'm gonna call you silt from now on.
Bicycle bill for three, huh?
Yeah.
Over at the park, I remember, we still have people sleeping there at night. I brought her up at one meeting.
Emerald?
Emerald Park. And the people that tell me, I said, well, just call the police, don't tell me. He said, well, he comes to the meetings. Anyway, the other day, Wednesday of last week, there were guys sleeping on the bench over there with his bicycle. He was just getting ready to leave and I walked up there. But there's still a problem over there.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in public comment?
Hi, my name is Lee, 7th Street, Laverne. I still want to follow up the White Avenue, Wyndenink. Actually, we saw the newspaper twice and then talked about it's gonna revise. So actually, we're still doing the online petition till today. It's 250, more than that. Most is a Laverne resident. But we still feel a little confused because the other two ladies should come with me, but they just feel uncomfortable, sick tonight. So that's why I come here to follow up again. We don't really have much clue what should we do right now. Since we choose Facebook and make the video to reach more people, even try to get $10, $20 to see the zip code, some people they never heard about that. But they still come to sign the petition and leave messages to us. So that's why I know 90% resident will really support us to not doing the White, Wyndenink. We heard about the next meeting will be July 10, about July 10. It will not be here, it will be Monroe here, right? So we were really planning to everybody hold a site to go there to Kotex. We had the right to do that, right? So I just hope not just our resident just go there by ourselves. I really hope our city will have some voice to tell them, we don't like this idea. We hope keep Old Town Laverne the same. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I wanted to thank those of you who supported our one year anniversary Saturday at Chases. It was a fantastic year moving to the new location. Had another record month in May and I'm, I'm just tickled to, to see Chases be recognized as the top, one of the top 25 sales tax revenue producers in the city of Laverne. And I, I'm really excited because I hear a couple of the businesses have tried to, are going to be applying for the Chases Model Program of Financial Assistance that the city gave us, the boost that we needed to really secure ourselves there. So Susan is recovering and was there for three hours on Saturday night. Lots of hugs and people wanted to see her and that was great. But I just wanted to thank this community publicly and this forum and the council memos that have supported Chases because it, it makes a difference to have your support and, and it's, the numbers are bearing out. Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to address? Okay, we will move on to council comments. Item nine, so far. Joe, you want to start this?
Sure. Just as a matter of information, the bus stop at Bonita and D Street, rest of that will be removed along with several other bus stops that are not ADA approved. So we will be taking those out in order to avoid any litigation or anyone being hurt inadvertently. I'm gonna go ahead and let you talk about the volunteer luncheon that we had.
No, you talked, the one that we did here?
Yeah.
No, I, I have a different volunteer luncheon. You talked about that?
All right, Charlie. It's all yours, Charlie.
One of the, one of the wonderful things about being on the city council is you get to meet some truly giving people. And that's our volunteers, our cert volunteers, people in the community that, that do so many different things for, for the city. We, we have a luncheon for them and we try to give out gifts. It's not nearly enough. And it, and it's just really a hard one we experienced for me to have numbers of people that are willing to give up the time and their efforts to make this event a city. So the luncheon we have for them, small, small token. I wish there was more that we could do for them. Thank you.
Sure. I guess all, two groups that I remember out of the volunteer luncheon were RSVP and Bingo, but I'm sure I'm missing 17 other groups that others can fill in because it is a marvelous lunch. We have a lot of fun. The other piece I'm gonna say is that on Memorial Day that's passed, we had a wonderful ceremony at Veterans Hall. It was very meaningful and it was well-attended and spoke volumes for our community.
Yeah, the last two weeks have really been busy. And so beyond those items, about a week and a half ago, we had Captain Dave Benson from the fire department retire and Dawn and I went to the dinner and the ceremony. And we presented our certificate and spoke and Loopy joined us. And it was nice because she works with all the staff and she's known Dave for what, over 30 years? So it was nice to see him. And so we congratulated him on a very nice service to our community. And so we congratulated him on a very nice service to our community. The other item is, I want to let you all know, if you have kids, grandkids, even if you know some sports groups, there's a new business that opened up in town. We did ribbon cutting there last Thursday, Wednesday, and it's called United Sports Academy. But it's actually three businesses, three young men got together with their specialty with sports, and they created this business. It's down on Palomar's Avenue, by Wheeler Park, go down there, it's on the left-hand side. And what they do there is, they have a boxing ring upstairs, they have a turf area, huge, for a soccer field, they teach and train teams and individuals. There was a guy that was there jumping over hurdles, that is a football player from Benita. So they work with individuals to help train indoors, and you can do it year-round. And so it's really a nice concept, but they sit there open to have people come in, you can just ask for a tour, and they'll take you on it. So that was really nice. So Dawn and I were there for the ribbon cutting, and we got to present a certificate for that, too. And then on Saturday, Tim and I went to El Monte. Grace Napolitano, who is our Congresswoman, puts on a ceremony that honors all volunteers from the city that are nominated. So for us, Jen and Jim Kesterson, Sylvia Lopez, Natalie Lopez, were nominated. And here's a picture that I had taken, but I know it's hard to see. But I'll pass it up here so you can see, and I'm going to give these pictures to them. But it was such a touching ceremony, that these people were recognized by their Congresswoman, which some people never even get to meet their Congresswoman or senators. And so it's a very special event, and it was really nice.
It was great.
So wonderful things in this community.
I was told to be reminded, or I was reminded that I missed the fact that during that luncheon, you missed that concert, but if you can ever attend Ramona Middle School Jazz Concert, by all means, find them and attend. I mean, and one thing I, which reminded me of it, is, is one time I was talking to Jeff Byrd, who's the conductor, the band conductor for concert and jazz at Benita High School, has really just said that Ramona sets him up really well, because he doesn't have to teach children how to play musical instruments, they all know it coming out of Ramona. And these 13 and 14-year-olds were playing like they could have been 40, because they were rocking it in the jazz world. They were doing jazz impromptu solos and all sorts of stuff, it was amazing. We also had some fabulous choir concerts at Benita Center for the Arts, both high school and middle school pop concerts were the past two weeks. So, there's a lot of music to be had, so go to the websites and look for them, because we didn't pay a dime for that concert, I'd say have them play all day.
You mean they sing and play baseball at Benita High School?
They do quite well.
Tim?
I'm to, back John with Robin, that Grace Napolitano, our US Congresswoman, 32nd District, she's incredible. I mean, she, it's, we walked in, and first we sat at her table, then she's grabbing us to take pictures with everybody. And, you know, and the city, kudos to the city of El Monte for bringing us in, they had a beautiful brunch. But she, and then our chaplain, Kevin. Amazing guy, he did a speech, and it was so eloquent, just to see these people that, to serve these volunteers. There can be not enough done for our volunteers, because it's the heart of our city. Along with that also, Teacher of the Year Celebration, May 22nd, May 23rd, Laverne Heights Walkathon. They raised, what, $40,000 or $50,000 for funding all sorts of, whatever they need for their schools, electronic computers. And then Dawn's going to do that one, and then the one-year anniversary of Chases, the food was as good or better than it ever's been, and there were so many people from Laverne. And outside areas there, it was like a reunion, it was a great, great time. So, again, our downtown restaurants were fantastic, they're all fantastic. But it's, we have, Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, we have Ramona Middle School graduation, and I think that, and then Benita High School, and I think we are...
Haynes.
We are pretty good. It's been crazy between budgets and everything else.
Charlie?
Haynes Family Program.
Haynes has got graduations coming. Good, good. I want to follow up by saying that this community, a lot of what it is, is about the volunteers in the city. And we saw it tonight with families of support or firefighters. We saw it tonight with our baseball team, and the families, and the coaches. I think four of those five coaches don't get paid. I don't know if they do or not, but if they do, it's just a sign that the volunteers are great. Memorial Day, I have heard, is the best we've ever had. And I know there was a number of people in here, and there's somebody here tonight, Tom, who said, I wish you'd stop doing that, because I needed a handkerchief on my eyes. And when you affect people that way, in a positive way, about what some of the things are important, and about why we have our freedom, it's pretty amazing. Laverne Heights celebrated last week with unveiling their water log and dirt.
Didn't do too well for Dawn.
Time capsule for 25 years.
They were pulling stuff out like this.
Took it out in pieces, it was just very, very unfortunate, but it was...
Some of it was okay, though.
Great effort, and they had a lot of fun. And I just want to remind people that coming up, we have the best day in Laverne, and that's July 4th. I hope you're all going to attend. I know as I look out, there's a lot of people that love this, love this day. We really put on a great day. Starting with our pancake breakfast, the Boy Scouts do, ending with the fireworks show, and everything in between, so please be a part of it. And our next item, that's all I have to say, is close session. Rob?
I do, Tim.
Yes, I have any for close session. Meet with real property negotiators under government, close section 54956.8. Property is the Amber Site.
Striving with those girls on their motorcycle.
Negotiating terms, our terms and price, the listed parties are there.
Thank you. So we're going to close session, and our next meeting will be at 4:30. It's a study session on June 17th, that's our planning commission applicants. We'll be starting that process, and our next scheduled city council meeting is two weeks from today, on Monday, June 17th. Ms. Chambers at 6:30.